Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call the board of this recess special meeting of the Castle County Board of Comis- County Commissioners. Thank you for being here this morning. We'll be hearing from many of our departments today, and hopefully get the rest of them within the next few days or in the next week. So at this time, I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, in compliance with NCGS 159-A through NCGS 159-13, and in accordance with the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, fiscal year 2021-2022 budget and budget message are presented this morning. A copy of the budget and bus- budget message will be filed in the office of the clerk to the board, where it will remain for public inspection until the governing board adopts the budget ordinance. The clerk will publish a statement that the proposed budget has been submitted to the governing board and is available for public inspection. The clerk will also make a copy of the proposed budget available to all news media in the county. Castle County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing concerning the budget during the second regularly scheduled meeting in June, which would be June 21st, 2021. This interim periods afford citizens, residents, the time to review the proposed budget and voice their opinions or objections to the governing board members. During the public hearing, any person who wishes to be heard on the budget will be allowed to time to speak. In the interim, the board will hold a series of budget review meetings and briefings on each of the major budget categories, at which time changes may be made to the budget and departments will be given the opportunity to speak about their needs and programming. These meetings will extend until the adoption of the budget if needed. Adoption of the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget ordinance is anticipated no later than the second regularly scheduled meeting of the board in June, which is June 21st, but may occur earlier or later in the process if deemed appropriate by the board. Therefore, I respectfully submit the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget that is balanced and in conformance with North Carolina law. The budget is in compliance with the state statutes, generally accepted accounting principles, and in compliance with the direction given by the Board of Commissioners. The following pages are an overview of the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget and an overview of the process and issues that drove the development of the budget, including a discussion of revenues and expenditures. The purchase of- the purpose of this budget is to provide the county with a physically responsible plan. The formal budget development process and the use of a budget, use of budget aids is to ensure that the county's financial strength and integrity is maintained and enhanced. An adopted budget is a legal document that serves many purposes. It embodies the priorities, goals, and objectives of government. It defines not only financial aspects of government, but government organization and operations as well. This budget contains information that gives citizens insight to government activity. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm fine. I'm happy to read the rest of the budget ordinance or the budget message. You each have a copy. A copy will be filed in the clerk's office, or I can just hit the highlights if you'd like me to.
Just the highlights to give the use of the board?
Yeah, I just want to recognize the impacts of COVID-19 as we move through the budget. As you may know, the state and local coronavirus fiscal recovery funds allocation of $2,195,281 for this year will certainly aid us in mitigating the effects of COVID-19 throughout the coming year. There's also an additional $2,195,281 scheduled for next fiscal year that will help as well. We do have to be very cautious while we're spending this money and follow the interim final rule and guidance that's provided by the Treasury Department. But I do want the board to note that as of today, there are no- none of these funds are used in the current budget. We will, as we go through the budget process, appropriate some of the- these funds to the budget to reduce the amount of general fund balance that is needed to balance the budget. Are there any questions about that?
Yeah, these are not included in any of-
No. None of- none of this funding is included. There are no appropriations from the state and local coronavirus fiscal recovery funds in the current year's budget.
And how does that jive with the key revenue changes?
Well, right now, we're unsure of whether that revenue will be received this fiscal year or next fiscal year. So, we may not have that as revenue in the next fiscal year. It may come in this year. But either way, the appropriation may be made in this upcoming fiscal year's budget and therefore will reduce the amount of general fund that's needed to balance the budget.
As a sense, this is a balanced budget now without any of those funds?
It is, but there's over $2.2 million of fund balance is used to budget the current budget.
Right, right.
So, we'll be able to reduce that $2.2 million with the use of the state and local coronavirus fiscal recovery.
That's my question. That's the answer. Thank you.
Yep. So, the total recommended general fund budget is $23,771, $771,397. That's a 5% increase from 2020. We're projecting a 2.25% increase compared to last year's budgeted adware revenues. So, we've got a 5% increase in spending and a 2.25% increase in adware revenues. So, just some key revenue changes. As I said, $2.2 million of fund balance is appropriated in the current budget. I will remind the board that approximately $1.7 to $1.8 million of the appropriated fund balance for this current fiscal year will be returned to the general fund and in excess of $200,000 will be added to the general fund balance. There is $377,372 of additional unrestricted sales and use taxes included in the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Just to note, any new positions, we're moving on to expenditures, any new positions that were applied to the budget process will be included in the discussions you had over the next several weeks. I do want to bring to the board's attention that $98,031 over current year's expense and transfers will be needed to comply with NCFAST and DHHS reporting requirements for DSS. For the second straight year, we've seen a decrease in accounting tax dollar funding for the health department. We'll see a decrease of $96,379 for this upcoming fiscal year. Just to note, the request for the patrol cars for the sheriff's office is under debt, service, and vehicle lease. It's not included in the sheriff's budget. There's no COLA or salary adjustment included in the budget. Salary adjustments and requests will be evaluated over the next coming week, a couple weeks, as we move through the process. The salary study information that the board requested was provided during the initial budget session, and you may evaluate that as we proceed to the budget process. We have had, we have experienced no additional expenses due to employee and retiring health insurance premium rate increases, meaning that when they looked at our experience, we came back with a 0% increase in health insurance. That's huge when we looked at 54% two years ago and then 11% last year. I do want to bring to the board's attention that there has been an additional $343,927 appropriated for solid waste hauling and tipping. That's not contained in the general fund expenses and revenues. It is an enterprise fund, but I just want the board to be aware of that as we move forward. Castle County Board of Education has requested an increase of 20% or $773,000. Only $87,000 of operating expense that was requested is included in the manager's recommended budget. Teacher supplements were also removed from the recommended budget to meet the objective set by the Board of Commissioners. Piedmont Community College has increased their requested allocation for this coming fiscal year by 5.5% or $32,262. The requested increase is included in the recommended budget to meet the objective set by the board. Just in conclusion, I think the outlook for Castle County is bright with continued growth and optimism. COVID-19 vaccinations are strong and the effects of COVID-19 are hopefully in the past. It does remain imperative that we continue to identify creative ways of doing business and providing services that will result in cost reductions while maintaining service levels as well as searching for revenue enhancement opportunities other than in property tax revenues. However, it is important that we realize that adware and tax and revenue are always and will always be our strongest source of revenue. Therefore, we must continue to make Castle County an enjoyable and inviting place to live, work, and play. I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for providing valuable direction to the staff to assist with the development of this recommended budget. Also commend the department leaders and their staff for the diligent work on the fiscal year 2021-22 budget and truly appreciate their willingness to sacrifice when reducing expenses. I look forward to working with the board to develop a final budget for the upcoming fiscal year that will meet the service needs and expectations of everyone we serve. Respectfully submitted.
Any other questions or comments on our county manager's budget message?
The fund balance, the guidelines for the percent fund balance we're supposed to retain. Can you comment on changes that this budget reflects?
So, the recommended fund balance perceived, or percentage from the LGC is local government should maintain an 8% fund balance. The year before, we were looking at, a fiscal year before, we were looking at a 25% fund balance percentage. As I said, we did not spend the $1.8 million that was appropriated out of fund balance this current fiscal year and will add an additional $200,000 plus to that total. Having said that, we've not calculated the fund balance percentage to date. We don't know what that will be, but we anticipate it being between 20 and 27%.
That is the general fund balance?
That is the general fund.
Not on the side?
That is overall fund balance.
Any other questions or comments before we move on? All right, Mr. County Manager, continue.
So, Commissioners, we have several department heads with us this morning. We'll run through their budgets. As requested, we have the departments that really had very few changes to their budgets or no increases to their budgets today. So, we'll start off with Thomas Bernard, our tax director.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Commissioners, you have, you have all the information in your book for the tax department?
On tab three.
Thank you. So, under tab three, you have all the information from the tax department. As you'll see, there's an overall reduction of, it looks to be about $5,000 in last year's budget and this year's budget. I do believe that there will be a slight increase necessary in the salary line moving forward, but it'll be a very slight increase in the salary line for the tax department moving forward. So, other than that, the tax department's expenditures have fallen.
We just hope to keep it like that. We haven't needed anything. We have, we don't foresee hopefully any personnel changes, so we're hoping to, you know, remain, as they say, status quo at what we're doing. So far, so good. We've had a good year this year. We're like below a quarter percent ahead of last year's collections, so the collection rate's looking good. I don't foresee that dropping any, so everything else is pretty much the same. I don't see any big changes.
Board members, any questions? Commissioner Hall?
Yes. And this question I'm going to ask of everybody that comes up, so the rest of you guys can be thinking about it. What is it that you plan to do to better serve citizens of Castle County? And what have you heard from citizens that they think, how they think they could be better served?
I haven't heard a whole lot of response from the citizens. You know, with COVID and everything, they were just, we didn't get as personal with the contact and everything. We hope to do a better job on getting, you know, getting the personal property in Castle County. We've got a few new businesses, trying to get them to respond to our letters that we send out to the personal property listings, trying to get everybody on board as far as listing that, and make sure that's all, all the personal property is listed. And, you know, providing information for them. We try to provide information for them, for the senior citizens. We send postcards out to everybody that does not have a, does not have a listing, personal property listing, or real estate listing. If we send those postcards out to give them dates and everything about, you know, senior citizens, exclusion benefits, or where to contact us and everything of that nature.
I wanted to follow up on this one, just to the tax department. Where do we stand now with the tobacco buyout?
We don't, the tobacco buyout is gone. It's been gone for eons, so as far as the tax department, it's, it's mute right now. I mean, it was, one of those pounds just went away. Mr. Jefferson, I can't even remember what exactly, I mean, you probably do, but it's been a good while now.
Yeah, it's been almost over 10 years.
Over 10 years, and so when those pounds just went away, we made, you know, we just had to, we were taxing those pounds, and when we, they went away, we had to pull all that off, out of the records.
And as I was thinking, the reason I asked, I was thinking that has something to do with the property values also over a four or five-year period, and that's why I asked.
Right. It really didn't affect the, we were taxing the value of the poundage, but as far as the, when they, after they went away and did the next rebau, we, it really didn't affect the land value per se. Because we were taxing that market value, and the farmers were in the present use value program. They were already getting, and, you know, the ones that still raise tobacco, raising small grains, they still get, if they're in that program, they still get benefit of that present use value program.
Okay, maybe that's what got it confused, was that present value.
Right.
Use program, so.
A lot of, and a lot of those farmers that were raising tobacco, they, they, if they didn't want to raise small grains or, you know, cattle or hay, a lot of them ended up taking that land and putting it in trees, doing the forest for, switched over from agriculture to the forest program. Yes.
Got it.
Yes, sir.
Just a question. How about the new software? How things going with that?
It's going very well with that. We are hoping to have everything that they completed, conversion completed by July, because the COVID slowed that up tremendously, as it did everything else in the county, but it's looking good.
And I know we had talked about, we hope to see, and I know COVID has delayed this, but we hope to see some savings-
Oh, yes.
-because of this program. I think we mentioned around 60,000.
That's correct.
So, hopefully in the next year or two, we should begin to see that.
Yes, sir, next year, because COVID threw the wrench in, you know, delayed things, you know, I won't say three, four, five months or whatever, you know, but in that very again. It's picking back up now. Things looking good.
One other question, and I'll just ask you to describe this. Can you just explain to our board how our foreclosure program is at no cost to the county?
Well, the foreclosure program, that is one of the last things we do. I'd say the last step that we do. We notify people, send notices out, try to find bank accounts where they work. That is the last step that we do, we feel is necessary. And when those fees are put on the delinquent taxpayer, nobody pays that but them, and we don't pay the attorney's office until we collect them. So, until those fees are paid and, you know, paid by the delinquent taxpayer and collected by us, the attorney's paid. So, there's really a no cost to the county and to the paying taxpayer.
Yes, sir. Just to follow up, how much the taxpayers paid? What kind of fees are they paying? How much did we collect in the last couple of years and how much did we turn over to the attorney?
Now, I'd have to run some reports on that. I don't-
Give me an idea.
I won't say. I've got, I've got those projections, which I'm just wondering. I think it was about $553,000 over the last five years.
So, I just want to bring this up. I was just saying that it's no cost to the county. It is a cost to the county's taxpayers.
It's a, it's a cost to the delinquent taxpayers that allow them to go through it. That's correct.
Right. I just wanted to make that part.
And most of those are, majority of those, when it starts getting on up into some money, when they receive their first letter, they'll come in, because we give them, you know, tell them, please come in to make us set up a payment arrangement, and the majority of those first letter recipients all do that. But then, when it gets on up and they start having to do title work and everything, most time that is AR property. In other words, the owners of the property have, they have passed away, and we may have five or six or seven people that own the property together, you know, being siblings or family or whatever, and one of them doesn't want to pay because the other ones are not paying. You know, the others say they're not going to pay, but then when it starts getting on in this title work and they keep getting notices, then they, the majority of the time, they'll say, all right, we got to come in and, you know, say, you need to set up a payment arrangement. That's when we can stop everything and set up a payment arrangement. They all, you know, some of them want to pay, and that's what, that's what we do, because we don't, that's like I tell people, we're not in the real estate business. We don't want to sell, and we don't want to collect taxes. That's what we're supposed to do. And those people come in to set up those payment arrangements, we do so. And that's, but that's where the majority of the fees, when they start getting on into some money, is when there's a number of people involved and they don't want, you know, one says he doesn't want to pay, you know, and the other says, I'm not going to pay, you know, and then one of them wants to, the other six don't, and then the other one says, oh, I just quit paying because I'm, I'm the only one paying. And I say, well, you know, you need to get together and come up, you know, with an idea. They need to, they need to pay the taxes. They need to do their share to you or whatever if you're going to pay, but that's, that's how they usually answer that. So, but none of that money is paid out till after we have brought it in.
Commissioner Hall, to better answer your question, our revenues are $583,771, and our expenditures are $583,579. So, about a $200 difference between revenues and expenditures.
Well, I understand. I've known how it works for years. I just don't want it as a public that might be listening to say, to think that because we say that there's no cost to the county, that there is a cost to county taxpayers. Now, you can add a descriptive adjective or whatever you want to, to taxpayers, however, but still $500,000 is a lot of money for many citizens of Castle County.
All right. Any other questions?
Slightly off the budget on the reevaluation. When is that? Can you remind me?
2022, but the way I'm looking, I'll probably present another letter, move that out to 2023 because of the sales ratio. The last quarter that came in, the report we got back from the state was still good, but we're starting to see things slide, slide away. So, I mean, as far as, you know, the sales ratio dropping, but, you know, I thought I'd, I want to look at some more numbers and make, you know, put that out to 2023 and then do one in 2023.
I'm a little confused on that because recently, participating in the real estate market, my understanding is inventory is very low and therefore-
Right.
-it's going very quickly.
Right.
It used to be for least asking price.
Right. It's going more for that, but it's going to take about a year and a half to do a rebound. So, that's why the sales ratio has been looking really good, been keeping an eye on that the last quarter that came in, but it's starting, like you said, the inventory is getting low. People are coming from somewhere with bunches of money and paying more than what the value is, so I'm probably asked to do, to put it out to 2023 and then also request permission to send out a request to RFP for companies to do a rebound.
And also that when a property is sold, that sales price changes the tax impact.
Correct.
Sales price changes that sales ratio. Now, if we see something that's included in it, you know, but it doesn't actually change the value of the property in that period, you know, it just, it may have sold high, but we can't change it if we don't, you know, if we don't see some factors that are involved. So, that depends, it takes the reevaluation.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dick.
Mr. Bernard, could you email each commissioner a copy of that contract with the law firm? Uh, Mr. Bernard, could you email each commissioner a copy of that contract with the law firm that's doing the foreclosures? I'd like all of us to be on the same page and I don't want to have to run a copy of what I have and send to them. So could you, uh, possibly do that for us?
Sure.
I'd appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You all have a good day.
Thank you.
Building inspection's budget, uh, projected it's quite a bit less revenue this coming year and that's entirely because of the large permit that was, uh, the school, it's about eighty thousand. And that, that, apparently I, I looked at at this morning, our revenue for the year is up to about two hundred forty-two thousand. A lot of the expense involved in doing the inspection for the school will only occur, well, occur next year as much. So you almost have to look at the two things, just a, a combination of the two years to understand, you know, why, uh, twenty twenty-one's revenue is a lot higher than the projected revenue for the coming year, because I don't foresee any permits that would come in and anywhere near that kind of dollar. That was a huge project. And, uh, also in looking at it, that's, their revenues are decreased. I've been here about a little over, a little less than two years now. Last year's budget, I kind of went with what had happened previously. Over this time, I've realized that that was money and some of the interaction that was not being used, uh, that wasn't used last year. Uh, so I've tried to make that budget everything more realistic. And so it's, I'm, uh, pretty sure of the numbers I projected are about what they should. Last year, uh, we had a lot in it for education, because we have a probationary inspection. COVID stopped his progress entirely. The schools that he would have had to go to weren't being hailed, uh, testing became impossible. So almost all of that education budget is going to be unused until twenty twenty-one. And I reduced it in the coming year to something I thought was probably a little more realistic. And the other thing, from the standpoint of how we, uh, go about our business, uh, we purchased, uh, some additional soft, uh, upgrade to this iWork software where now people can go online and do everything, their permit, uh, they can all do, do it all without coming into the office. Uh, they submit their plans and records and things online. That has gone up great. I, I couldn't have, uh, believed, I wouldn't have believed it would go as smooth as it has. We have a lot of people use that. But the one complaint from everybody, yes, they have to come here and pay it or put it in the mail and it takes like takes about a week for it to get.
So commissioners, as you may remember, in last year's budget, uh, you approved, um, receiving credit card payments online. Um, that process is, has been difficult to say the least because of, because of contracts requiring, um, by the vendor that iWorks uses to process the credit card payments. Um, we've not been able to reach an agreement with them after going through our county attorney and their legal folks several times. We do understand that there are credit card processing companies that, um, that we can use, um, and that will still interface with iWorks, uh, for the most part, the same way. And that's one of the, the things that we look to do, um, in this coming fiscal year is to make sure that that credit card process gets up to speed as soon as possible.
But then going back to the, uh, uh, COVID impacted, uh, everybody, impacted make what it is. Because for about six months of the year, I was admin antique building inspector. Trying to, I say me, three-year-old man. But I survived.
We certainly appreciate your opinion.
But, uh, I've come back and looked at, uh, trying to familiarize myself with the pattern of building in the county. So I, I went back and looked at, uh, this past, this year and the past two years. I would, wouldn't have believed it. The building has been pretty much the same for three years as far as the number of permits and the do, uh, dollar value has grown a little, but not the number of permits sold. Uh, so that's within my projections, I have to, I, I, I assume that we're not going to see any growth in the number of permits. I hope I'm wrong. But there's some things happening around us that might, that might help that. Uh, I, the feeling during the year was we're doing a lot more, which we are doing a lot more inspections. To be honest, I think that's probably because we're doing a little better than, than done in the past, which results in some things being turned down that should be turned down. Yeah. And, uh, I think we're probably doing more, more of the things that should have been happening all along.
So commissioners, are there any questions for building inspection?
I'm sorry, Mr. So, yeah, I'll maybe ask Mr. Hall's question before he gets a chance to ask.
Okay.
You said the, uh, the online inspection form completion or whatever is, you, you, your new software or upgrade software makes that a lot easier.
Oh, yeah.
That would fall into that automation category to some extent, right? Where it's a lot easier for these people to do that online.
Exactly. Uh, about the time COVID come out, I started, I'd been here, I'd been about six months, hadn't done much with the program that we were using, but I've worked at several other places and used similar software. And I knew that the software would do a lot of things that it wasn't being, but we weren't taking advantage of. So, uh, when COVID happened, uh, they had an admin and other inspector, they went home. I had all the time in the world. I, I had a password to get into it. I've changed how we use that software dramatically. Uh, as a result, the, the job of the person that does the, what was admin, it's greatly reduced, uh, the paperwork and repetitive things that were happening. They, uh, almost all inspection departments now keep their records electronic. Electronic funds paper, we were required to keep for six years and then just, you know, destroy it. They were gone. Uh, now, all the records will be there in perpetuity. They, uh, they hide records. There's no need to get rid of those. So, uh, yeah, I, yeah. How we do that job there, you know, the permitting game has changed a lot. And many instances, it doesn't require even a final conversation that we're, inspection departments, as many of you might know, sometimes do not get the greatest, uh, uh, score of frailness. But then, you know, it's like, we're like anything else. It, it, we're dealing with general statutes. If the state goes, does not show us about what our position has to be, that doesn't mean people are happy with, uh, and making the process of buying a permit easier gets us off to another start. If, if people are mad another time they buy a permit, you can imagine what the inspector's going to deal with when he goes looking at the work that's been done, you know, so.
Any additional questions? Any other questions?
Was, was that be covered, anybody COVID? Since it's, it's reduced the, the inter, the actual physical contact?
We possibly.
The cost of the software, we did.
We did.
Decided that that was, uh, would be covered under the code.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, just, just an observation and then comment, uh, question for county manager. Uh, what you just described, I've been around a while. Uh, it's been asked for by citizens for years.
Really?
Now, maybe COVID prompted somebody to do something, but it's not a new request.
I, I can imagine. Yeah, I can.
But county manager, understanding that we're having problems with credit card companies, can we not figure out a way to do electronic funds transfers? Or some other mechanism that bitcoins or crypto currency and things keep people from having, uh, come to the county.
I'm, I'm not sure we accept those type, type currencies yet. Yet, being the key word. I think we'll probably all move to something like that sometime in the future. But, um, we're not, we're not accepting it. We don't trade in those yet.
Okay, ETS.
But I don't think ETS are, are supported by the iWorks so.
EFTs, yeah.
Right, EFT, electronic funds transfer.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think they're supported by the iWorks, are they, Ken?
I don't think so. They, they have talked about, uh, that in the future you would be able to do.
Yeah.
Talking about check over.
Perhaps, yeah, we need to get that software changed, upgraded or whatever. The reason I'm mentioning all of this, in my neighborhood, in the last six months, I've got, we've gotten a Family Dollar, a Dollar General and a Dollar Tree out in the middle of nowhere. I know those companies are not headquartered in Casco County. So it would make more sense if we're going to have businesses coming in that we figure out a way, electronic funds transfer, whatever, is doing things that's illegal through the banks.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Mike. Yeah, commissioners, um, our IT budget, um, is, looks to be about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars less than it was last year. Um, that's my recommendation. David's recommendation was, uh, closer to fifty-three thousand dollars under what it was last year. I will inform the board that as of November, David has decided to retire from the local government, Casco County local government. So, um, you might ask why my recommendation is actually higher than the department's. Well, I don't want to, as we move through the process of hiring a new director, I do not want to put a new director in the position of not having enough fund, funding to operate. That's why you'll see about twenty-eight thousand dollars of additional, um, expense in my recommended budget over David's budget. So David, um, or commissioners, you all have, um, the budget. Um, are there any questions overall for our IT director? The only question I have is on the capital outlay. What does that include? I know you had put fifty thousand, you know, county manager's sixty thousand, but what, what's?
Um, specifically to continue the project that we started this year with Windows seven replacements that, um, didn't go by this plan due to COVID and we shut down to all the program around that. So that'll be a continuation of that primarily and unforeseen hardware requirements with replacements and that sort of thing.
And I know we had talked, I can't remember now if it was last year or two years ago, about the fiber between the two buildings.
And the infrastructure for that has been completed. And so going into the next year, we'll be connecting this, the dot, so to speak, to make those connections, uh, between the facilities operational.
Anyone else have a question for? Or comments?
Uh, David, I have some concerns about ESAC and our email. I've brought it up to the board a couple of times. When I log in from home, I log in through Google. And Google tells me that, that, uh, software is not safe and I have to do some extra things just to get past them telling me it's not safe before I can get to my email.
Right, and I would not disagree with you at all on that. Um, I'm not sure how the connection between Google and ESAC works. Um, but to change emails, it has to be all or nothing. I can't do it piecemeal, so to speak. We have to do the whole county. And that's tied also to, um, what's called DNS records, which manages email, connects the email to the email provider through the internet and also the website. And so those two things are almost happening simultaneously. And I have to get control of the DNS record, which is now managed by the current website hosting service. So I have to get control of that. As a matter of fact, I've got, I called them at this afternoon, um, about that. So we got two things going on simultaneously.
I guess.
That is one of my goals, yes.
We are working on that.
We are working on it.
Because what Google tells me is that there's not adequate security.
I would agree.
And, and adequate security, then we are at risk.
Correct.
So how long do you think it would take the county to do whatever it is you got in mind?
To do it, I would, it's probably going to be a weekend event.
No, I mean in terms of the whole process.
For the email?
Yeah, all the things that you just mentioned, all the steps that's required.
The website is scheduled to go live, uh, June, this month. So that'll need to happen first because it's already in our development.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
And then the email will follow that.
I got you. So in other words, we've already started this process and almost near the end of.
Oh, correct.
Okay.
Good enough. Any other questions? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Give us just a minute, get your. Just a, just a word, uh, commissioners, I'd like to thank, uh, Mitch for presenting this morning. He actually found out he was presenting his budget this morning. So, um, I'd like to thank him for being willing to come in and take part in this with such short notice. As you can see, uh, the soil and water, um, budget increased by, uh, about two to three thousand dollars. Um, the, the manager's recommended budget, uh, included about fifteen hundred dollars of that and there were slight increases at certain places, but overall the budget held still. So if there's any questions for soil and water, do you have anything you want to share?
My answer is very simple. Thank you. Michelle will put some of them out.
This all looks like a sell.
So, so you, you all still able to assist with the four H in school enrichment and that sort of thing with our kids?
Everybody's saying fine, but.
Okay. Any questions?
Just kind of a general question. I I haven't looked at the summary detail, but what just kind of occurred to me is the motor fuel, in other words, gas and fuel costs. We've all seen gasoline prices jump up here. Was any of that accounted for overall in these, in these budgets?
Well, usually motor fuel is one of those things that you, you have to use, right? So if it's, if we increase the motor fuel percentages in a budget, in in budgets where, um, it was a very, very large factor, uh, yes. In budgets that have a smaller usage, probably not. Uh, I think five hundred dollars would be, um, adequate for Soil and Water Department moving forward to the next fiscal year. But if not, there's usually other lines that are not fully spent where budget transfers and budget amendments can be made, um, to even out the cost. So their total budget does not increase, but that budget line may increase by a hundred dollars, something like that.
Yeah. Well, thank you for this.
He's about his word.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I should just say Commissioner Hall wouldn't.
Now, I I respect that he came in. I'm such a short notice. I'm going to answer the leave one question. So what are you planning to do different this year for better service?
To keep trying to get as much money as we can with state government. Really, nothing changed. We don't want. Yeah, try to get back live with the boys and, uh, that kind of stuff. We didn't have just virtually, virtually, that's features.
Vehicle repairs was like a standard slang. It's your vehicle.
I, uh, I got stuck, so I just went back and got a truck. We, I got stuck in a major storm. So I got to do the, uh, bar tracking.
Overall, is the vehicle used?
Oh, one hundred and twelve. Works that. It'll make it to eleven.
All right, well, thank you for all you do.
Thank you very, very much.
I will wait for you to say, I will go ahead and ask you first one question. Uh, I know, I think in eighteen nineteen we hired two more positions. Are those filled and?
Yes, everything's filled and and we actually, the last agent, the, uh, N T agent came on in March last year. Three days before it went, because it, um, locked down, so, um, he hasn't, we, and then they've had, it's been kind of an interesting deal because N T's restrictions versus its age restriction, um, what our agents could do are totally different. They just now released, um, where we can, we we send him out in the field now. So, um, he's, he's starting to get out with the other agents more and get to know some of the communities a little bit better. But he's been at the bench, but yes, we are full. And then our two, the two that you funded, the two new ones, uh, they are actually, as part of the salary increase, they're coming up on the bigger end for sharing the salary ladder. Um, so they're making strides and doing a lot of good, uh, community work.
Okay, County Manager.
All right, Commissioners, as you can see, uh, their, last year's fiscal budget or fiscal year's budget was four hundred and two thousand. This year you're seeing four hundred and fourteen thousand for the manager's recommended budget. As Travis said, about nine thousand dollars of that is in, uh, the salary line. And there's some other small incremental increases. But for the most part, other than salaries, everything stayed, um, even. You know, benefits increased, longevity, fringe, FICA, retirement, those kind of things. Um, slightly to make up for the twelve thousand dollars increase.
An increase in it is, is there is an expected, um, some, some sort of state, um, increase in salary at the state university. We don't know what percentage, so we budgeted on the higher end. And once we know that exactly, we'll pull that off. But, uh, we know the governor's put it out there and then NC State's actually told us a lot of the CDs have been on them the last couple of months to find out just kind of ballpark what it's going to be. We don't know yet, so, um, we're waiting for that to come through. Because the salaries are funded, we only have one agent that's a hundred percent county. Everybody else is on a split ratio. Uh, some are fifty percent, some are sixty percent county. So, um, until that plays out, we don't know exactly what effect that is on the salary.
Questions, comments? Just, I just have one more. I see that, uh, in your goals and objectives down the road, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three partner on PCC, uh, on the C program.
Yes, we are developing some very strong partnerships. We're finalizing an MOU that kind of defined lanes of operation for everybody. So we're, we're kind of getting there. Uh, we're going to be heavily involved with incubator side of it. And then, um, as we've talked with PCC on goals and priorities for the ag program, you know, livestock is a very large segment of our ag community. Um, C was really focused on a little bit, so we batted some of that in. We're going to have some livestock stuff there, small farm or small poultry type things. Um, we've got a grazing and grass range management area planned that we're going to help manage with that. And do some a little bit of research and stuff on that so we can get some better information to provide to farmers and ranchers in this area. Um, some integrated grazing between poultry, small units and cattle. We're going through some studies, try to get some information predominant to this area that we can help with, Commissioners. And and until they can really get the students numbers up, we're working through the MOU to, um, and how it all works out salary wise and compensation wise, maybe possibly some of our staff teaching some livestock classes that in the ag program too. So we're, we're working on that. And then we're also deciding the MOU with, uh, the group that's going to redo the Castle School or the school down here that, I'm agreeing to that. And we, uh, signed the MOU with intent to provide education services for adults with that too. Gardening as well as food and safety and, um, FCS life program.
I appreciate you reaching out to other agencies and working with them and trying to cooperate with them. Any comments, questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for which, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me back up. Commissioner Hall, I know you have a comment or a question.
I just want to ask you briefly about GAB certification for local farms.
Yes.
And I'm kind of concerned that our local institutions are probably not bad enough for local farms.
That the GAB certification is a very interesting process to get through. We're working on that through the C project, the, the company that we have, that C, PCC has, um, have tentative agreements to run the distribution and, uh, the Food Hub. They already have a process in place to help with, um, and and the staff and everything in place to start helping with that. So as we start working with the incubator farm, we start working with the Food Hub, getting them, and they're wanting to start getting here. So we're in the process to start working with them. Once they're here and and on site, they will be able to start helping those that want to get GAB certified work through the process. It's a long, detailed, uh, process of inspection and going through a lot of loopholes. And mainly just paperwork, getting through all of the paperwork, and they have that process already in place in other places. So they will be helping because it benefits their distribution hub that as many people get GAB certified and to distribute that product.
So the distribution hub is definitely a part of PCC program?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's going to be housed in PCC and it's, uh, they're, they're, they're working and they've already, they're, they're in, they've got another Food Hub in, in a, in a new organization that they use, uh, nonprofit that they combine with that does all of that, has all of that process in place and already operating.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Any other comments, questions? Okay, well, thank you so much.
See, in the past, we've had, uh, quite a bit of discussion about the, the, and its condition. Is that addressed in this?
There, there are, there is money in the maintenance budget to replace windows in, in the act.
That's it?
Yes.
Roof? Roof fixed. I mean, we're, we're actually good.
We're in there. And we went through and did some banking last year. I mean, and we're making some updates to the kitchen down. We've actually got some budget money that came through from state. They pulled some of our travel budget back because we weren't using it through COVID and then they released it to us. So we've actually upgraded the kitchen a little bit. We've put in a large screen TV and some stuff to do some, uh, uh, video conferencing better in the kitchen downstairs, um, dual craft, um, in person as well as virtual stuff. So I, I mean, it's functional for us and it's doing okay. We addressed, uh, one of the back doors is the only, the concern that I had.
There's a loophole.
There, they just did, uh, bids on it. So I have, it's, it's in the process. So the back door in the one store room, um, we only had the fire incident earlier this spring downstairs. It, uh, made us aware we needed to fix that, uh, and fix that, the building, so. But yeah, it, it needs work, but it's, it's functional. We've cleaned it up and we've made it work where it's meeting our needs right now.
So the HVAC and everything is, I mean, are we going to get any big surprises on that? Is that?
Well, our, our maintenance directors went through and scheduled out which HVAC units need to be, um, replaced. And I'm not sure if that was one of them, but, um, that money is contained in our maintenance budget as well.
All right.
Thank you very much.
We'll hear from our senior services, then we'll take a quick recess, if that's okay, because she's been waiting for a while, so.
Good morning.
Commissioners, you'll see, um, most parts, uh, senior services have stayed the same. Um, there is a slight increase in manager's recommendation and that has, basically has to do with salary. Salaries, longevity, FICA, retirement and health insurance.
I know, uh, I believe I came from sixty-five now, some of my members do. Uh, last year or a year before, we talked about the discarded meals. And I think we were going to look into whether or not they could be donated or anything, and maybe I missed that, but.
Unfortunately, the contract reads that we cannot do anything with those meals. It's, it's very frustrating. We try very hard. Um, we do have some seniors that come into, um, the senior center that may not be sixty yet and the, the meal requirement is sixty plus. Um, so we, once we have completed those meals and gotten all of our signatures so we can get reimbursed for the meals, then we will provide that meal to somebody in one of those that are under sixty so that we don't have to throw it away. I don't, I can't throw food away, but unfortunately, that's the way the contract reads at this point.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Uh, ju- just for clarification, would you just explain kind of the difference between the senior center of development and the senior services programming? What's the big difference between those two?
There's not really much of a difference. Um, I will say that we, because of COVID, um, we did lose folks during last year either to being placed in nursing homes or passing away, um, either because of illnesses or we did have some of COVID. Um, we did have some money that I had to, to do a budget revision with, um, last month. And that was about nine two thousand dollars that I moved to senior center operations. With that being said, that's going to be a good thing because I am actually in the process of working with a program called My Senior Center. Um, that will be able to purchase all the seniors that participate at the senior center will be able to receive a card. And they'll be able to log themselves in instead of us having so much paper. And it'll also be better for us to track and do reporting, um, on the seniors that are coming in. We were opened on May seventeenth, so, um, it's slow go, but we're, we have a computer class with PCC that's already in progress. Um, and we have some other things. We've got our exercise classes back on track. Um, so they're gradually, they're starting to come in and so we're starting to see them a little, little by little.
Well, and the reason I ask that is because in the budget I see both of those are listed on separate items, line items and had ninety-five hundred for each one. So I just wondered what the difference was between the two. Senior Center of Development, Senior.
Or just the line up.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Commissioner?
I'll ask something. It's been probably a year and a half or two since I've been in the center.
Yes, sir.
But in the exercise room, how is that going? Well, I know COVID probably slowed things down, so I'll just go ahead and get to my question. I was stopped one day and somebody was complaining that they needed a television there.
There's been a television in the exercise room for
Oh.
Probably pushing three years ago.
Okay, so I mean, it's that long been that long?
Actually, that one was donated. Um, and then we also have one in the dining room as well. So those, that's been.
Yeah, because I started, I started coming to the fitness room two years ago when the TV.
I think it's been at least three years, yes, sir. So there's a TV. I don't, I, I do not, some of them complain because I don't have direct TV, but I just don't see that as a must. The TV's worth it. We get me TV with the old shows on it. Most of them are happy with it. Some of them don't have TV, but I'm just not paying that every month for, you know, a dollar.
You know, we'll say the times that I have been, I haven't been lately, of course, with COVID too, but it was generally well-used. Generally, there were three or four people in about every time I ever went.
We, you know, when, before COVID, we averaged, summertime it slows down a little bit, but we would average anywhere from fifty to sixty people coming through there in a day, um, for the exercise room, especially in the winter time.
Any other? Well, thank you so much for all you do for our seniors and, and for me. And for us on this board. Uh, at this time, uh, we'll take a quick brief recess, uh, before we have our other group start.
Okay. So Mr. Chairman, next on my schedule, I have JCP.
Okay. Tab seven in your books, Jim.
JCP Services.
Tab seven. All right, County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, as you can see, uh, the JCPC used enrichment program. Um, our budget last year was seventy-three thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Their budget this year is seventy-five. Budget last year was seventy-three thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars. Their budget this year is seventy-five thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars. So an increase of about two thousand dollars. Most, um looks like most of that is in salaries. I think there are some small other incremental changes, but I'll let Whitney and Tom tell you about those.
Okay.
I have a small change for cost of living adjustment. It went from forty-two thousand one hundred forty-two dollars to forty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. And additionally, we changed longevity. Uh Tanya has now hit ten years, so she goes to nine hundred seventy-one dollars. So those were the main changes we added, colon and longevity. Everything else will stay the same.
You know, I noticed in your goal and objectives for this coming year, budget year, uh secure more sites, community service throughout the county. And and my question is, and I know with safety and health of our kids, but but are farms, is are farms allowed to be in any of that?
Farms could um be part of that. It would just depend on the child's age and what kind of equipment they could actually use and be around.
Right.
We go by the, you know, the North Carolina law and law, labor law. Yeah. So that's, but yeah, we've actually used them on a ostrich farm one time. A parent had hooked up there, so yes, definitely.
Okay, I just, I wondered if we used farms at all and if we couldn't circulate. Okay. Questions, comments? I call Commissioner Hall to chew in, so we're good with you.
So just, I I'm sure everybody's aware, but JCPC, that's the way we introduce the department. It's a juvenile crime prevention council. Tanya, why don't you just give them a two-minute overview of what you do?
Okay, so we work with youth. We're restorative. We try to catch them before they get into the juvenile court system itself itself. We do teen court, which is for, we did bring in sentences circles this year so we can actually work with youth that are in elementary school. Um and that's our first tier. The second tier is actually going into teen court, which um we go into the courtroom and you're, all of your court staff besides the judge are the other youths from here in the county. Their attorneys and all that. Then the third tier of it is still teen court, but if you've gotten in trouble that many times that you have to go to the juvenile court council, we do that point. We also do community service, which is saying, you know, we utilize a lot of departments that um and within the county and different agencies. And we try to also do some life skill classes in with the community service. So some hands-on and some learning. And it just gives the kids another positive role model or more than at least more than one anyway to be able to come in. And we enjoy working with them.
And Commissioners, just so you remember, uh JCPC is a component of the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's office oversees JCPC. I know um it's went through several different departments overseeing the program from cooperative extension to administration. But um, you know, I think the the last move to the sheriff's office was an appropriate fit and I think it's worked well under the sheriff's office.
Questions, comments?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Farmers Lake. Commissioners, overall, you'll see a decrease in this year's budget. There was a twenty thousand dollar capital outlay last year to purchase a boat. Mr. King did purchase a boat and now we're going to purchase a trailer, but not for the boat. We're going to purchase a trailer for canoes and kayaks to help bring them up the steep incline that we have there, which has been probably needed for several years. But those are, I kind of, I think those are the highlights of the Farmers Lake budget. Mr. King?
Questions off? Question. Are they going to be on the maintenance budget or are we looking at putting any rest? What is our story on that?
Probably twice my budget. It was set in the tank and come up to the hill and everything else. There's a whole lot to that because you get so close to the water. That's a classy water machine, right? We have a bunch set by dryer, field lines, didn't build it to. I knew at one time we had discussed, yeah, we discussed and I looked into it a little bit and I think you know, have a talking and stuff like that trying to figure out what to do, what we want to do. I did go ahead and put the handheld foregone that already. That's happened already this year. It'll be very expensive to go over there. But the lucky thing, I only have the one now. Five years ago, that was two, not the one. Laid it in, they would fill it up that high.
We don't have a new boat here.
It's in the mail.
Expect it this week.
I don't know. I call three times a week. You know, there's a long chase.
So the trailer that you're asked for, that is included in this budget, correct?
Yeah, I want to get some real fancy with the racks and everything, but uh it would be no. I'm glad I didn't measure before I come down.
Anyone else? But one other thing, at one time, we had talked about the possibility of having part-time help or whatever at, we're open on Mondays and Tuesdays for those who have permits, correct?
Yeah.
And and we talked about so that raising liability, but more concern, my my biggest concern is having citizens on the lake, nobody there, although we can't prevent accidents from happening. But if it did happen and nobody knew about it, you know, there was nobody around. So I I don't know if you ever looked into what?
I looked into that and I gotta get some guidance on that thing, but I know, I don't feel comfortable. I know there's people come out and argue about that. But you have to really play it by ear, you know. We did it years ago. Kevin Howard did want to cut the budget a little bit, so we went all the money to. We used to have people all, you know, all the time. I think we saved something like twenty-one dollars on the budget like that. I think somebody mentioned, they said, look, this is where we want to be on liability. Work that way. But I don't feel comfortable.
Do you have any, I don't know, how many people maybe come out on Mondays and Tuesdays?
Well, you always have your boaters.
Right.
Then you have some of your walkers and stuff like that. And we have actually a couple of people that fish off purely by boats there because they come in on Monday. It's hard to tell because we've been doing it so long, figuring out the boats. Get back on, make it do it a year or something, basing on that. But now we don't get a head camp because nobody's at the line of view this Sunday mornings. You can take a head camp.
I think it's something this board sometimes needs to consider for the safety of our citizens who do do go out there. I mean, if someone's fishing on that dock falls in, if we had somebody there, maybe they would say, oh, maybe. But, you know, it's something I think we need to look at in the room. Any other questions or comments from Armor Lake?
Who's bright idea was to get the trail? Who's bright idea was to get the trail, hold the canoe, the kayak?
Mine.
Back this up. Tanya, he's still sorry for.
Well, it's funny because you you should bring your group down and all of them jumping up and down and the kayak, somebody looking at him like, we gotta go back. It's sort of sad.
It was, but. Well, I guess one other question. Did we, did we have our fishing tournament doing this past year?
Not last.
Not last year, but you had it.
It's not a little full of fun you're going on. We're going to do a group and have a walking trail or a fishing camp tonight.
Going to be able to do your kids' thing this summer? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel.
Commissioners, we had a a couple of departments not be able to be with us today that are on the schedule, so we plugged in the library. Ronald was great to present to us today. So Commissioners, as most of you know, um we have the library, built a new library. They were housed in a residential, basically a residential home for about a year. And then moving back to the the new library, there were some budget changes during during the time when they were in the residential home and providing services out of that. The book budget was cut. Uh I know they're looking to reinstate the book budget and a couple of other things, so I'll let our library take.
We're in trouble.
Oh, they got another sheet.
This is a list of all the book budgets in the states and uh and libraries in the state of North Carolina. You see, the first one, the highest budget is Charlotte Maklerberg with five million dollars. I do not ask them for that. On the first page, um if you look at the bottom, it is a hundred thousand dollars for Jacob. So if you turn the page over, the highlighted one that is second to last is our book budget. And this is before the cut from last year. So we are now last in the state for books. Uh we have fourteen thousand five hundred dollars in our book budget. I was able, because this year we did not have in-person performers and we did not travel, so we were able to move some of the money from performers and travels into the book budget this year. So we're able to get a few more books than what the budget would have allowed. But what I'm asking for for a book budget is a bit of an increase of about nine thousand dollars to get us up to around Farmville and below Farmville, Farmville but above Warren County. So I'm I'm not asking for to be up near Charlotte, but I am asking to not be at the bottom. The other increases include the raises that were added in last year, so the raises and and five gun benefits. We also have MCNC, obviously because of the more need for virtual programs and virtual meetings, especially in this room. Our bandwidth was not sufficient, so the county manager agreed to reduce us to fiber. That is going to be an increase of four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. That we have that today, so hopefully you'll see a difference in the speed. Data's been working hard on that. The other, the small increase includes electricity. When we moved back into this building, electricity and some of our subscriptions increased. So that's about four thousand dollars difference. And then the other, the last increase I've asked of requesting is our van. Our van has been sitting out there for about three months. It does not run. Our maintenance has looked at it a couple of times. So we use the van to go to, we didn't as much this past year, so we've been able to manage. But we go to Road Bridge, Caswell House, Bryan Center, farmer's market for children's programs, different, different outreach things that we do in addition to moving donated books to the little libraries and and when people donate to us. So different, different types of program. So we do use the van quite, quite frequently. It is thirteen years old and it will not keep a charge. So we've replaced the battery twice. Maintenance has charged the battery, but it dies within a day. So there's something pretty big going on with it and thirteen-year-old van. I'm not, I just, we can try to fix it. I have not looked at trying to tow it and fix it because it's, it's pretty old. And it's left me on the side of the street, going to the mountains, going to the top. Y'all know that. So that was my other request. The other things in the, in my budget, if you have any questions on my fines and fees schedule, I'm asking that we eliminate. So this, this year, we did not charge any fines and fees. The board passed that when COVID hit. We did not charge any fines and fees to anyone because of the pandemic and everything that was going on. Many libraries are not charging fines and fees at all. So instead of taking the giant step, we are requesting that we do not charge fines and fees to children's books because it's not the children's fault if the parent brings them in and checks books out and don't return them on time. So we do have children that when they reach sixteen or eighteen and they have books that are way overdue or lost, we're still requiring them to pay those overdue fines or or lost book fees. All lost books fees would still have to be paid. If you lose a book, you 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 replace that book. But if it's a few weeks overdue, um we're asking for children's books not to charge those overdue fines. Adults, however, you take on their responsibility to check in that book out and we want you to get it back in time so the next person can check it out. A lot of libraries that can afford to buy multiple copies of James Patterson, it's not as big of a deal if you don't bring that book back on time. We have, we have enough money to buy one copy of each book, so we don't have the luxury of having multiple copies if you if you don't or bringing yours back. So fine being scheduled in there. And there's also a resolution for donated, unrepairable, outdated and uncirculated books to donate to the friends of the library. We've done this for years. They sell the books and their books out and then they use money to supplement programs.
And Commissioners, just as I said, uh unless there's some major objection, when budget is passed, the resolution agreeing to the donated uh books will will be passed as well.
Are you going to look in at our lease program as far as a thing?
We are. As a matter of fact, I told Ms. Miller that that needed to be moved into debt services for with the other vehicles.
That's a ten thousand dollar?
Yes. And that that's about the appropriate amount to to lease the van is about ten thousand dollars.
Does it need any retrofit or?
No. I mean, I think they would add some some stickers and and things like that.
It would be bad. The main thing is the van, the only thing we're really need on the van is for the seats to lay down so we can stack books and programs in it or the seats to raise up if we're going to a training, but the van doesn't need anything. We we don't have a bookworm bill, which are very expensive. So um we supplement that with a van.
Any other questions? Comments?
Yes, sir. What is the main category of books that you want to buy as you increase your book budget?
So our nonfiction and nonfiction circulation has decreased a little bit with the, with everyone getting the internet. But not with the children. So we work closely with the school systems to make sure that we have the required reading, the summer reading list. Especially, we're also starting a one thousand books before kindergarten program. Audrey's been working hard on that to try to, try to encourage parents to get their children to read and to read to their children before they start school. So children's books is our primary focus, but we also have to keep the bestsellers and and some of the more updated books. For the non, for nonfiction example, um you know, there's tons, we have tons of cookbooks, but they're Betty Crocker and and we now need keto cookbook, so we can't not update the nonfiction selection. There's new exercise programs, there's new health things that are out, so we can't, we have to weed out the stuff that is not long or accurate to to be able to update and supplement the adult and children's nonfiction books. And we also have, okay, so we have, we have young adult books for the teenagers. We have large print books for this, anyone that needs larger print. We have nonfiction books. We also have the bestsellers. We have children's books. We have classics, easy readers, workbooks for the babies.
Help me find the book budget on this sheet.
So we did have to do some rearranging. I did have to do some rearranging because we get state aid is eighty-three thousand dollars. And with increase with salaries and benefits, we had to rearrange. And with increase with salaries and benefits, we had to rearrange where some of the money's taken out from. So the book budget, I actually have two. One is under local. All right, so the book budget is halfway down where it says total local funds. It is 1, 2, 3 up from there. And then it is also again under state funds, the third one from the bottom of the state.
So it's $27,000?
Yes.
How does it, I thought I heard you say 19,000?
We have $14,500 this year. Last year, we had asked for, right, it was cut by $5,000. So we had $19,000 originally.
That was last year, okay.
We cut it $5,000, so we have $14,500. I'm asking for a little bit more this year.
So that's your comment that you want to do just for?
Yes.
What, what is that? What is that bias? I mean, what is $27,000? What would you do if you had twice that much?
So obviously, Charlotte can spend $5 million in books. We could buy, but the bestsellers, you're obligated to buy. Then we also have some standing authors, the James Patterson, Daniel Steele. We also have, we have specialty books. We have almost romance. We have African-American romance. We have cowboy romance. So there are people who read specialty books. And then we have the children's books, award books for babies, and those are the ones that are made a little thicker so that if they can't tear them as easily. We have beginning reader books, which are the books with just like two or three words on page. Then you move up to chapter books. So that's probably elementary school age where they're first learning to read the small chapters. Middle school books are just the more complicated chapter books. And then you have the high school books, which are classics, nonfiction books for reports, and they do actually come in and read a lot of those. Adult books, we have large print books. And then we also have ebooks that we are paying for, this $3,000 a year where you can download to your own device. And we have teen books. We have young adult books. We have anime books.
So I guess my question is, you have certain activity where those people checking books out.
Right.
If you, as I say, doubled your book budget, would that activity increase twofold? You see where I'm trying to go with this?
Right.
So how do we increase the activity of the readership?
So normally, and one of the reasons we built this building is to get people, because what we were doing before was having the performers at the scenic center. So the whole point of summer reading programs is to have the children and parents come to the library so that they're doing the activities, doing the programs, and then right here with the books, be able to check them out. You know, it wasn't that long ago that, when I was working in Orange County, we were a region, and Orange County was number one in the state for people, Baptist, Supreme, higher. Caswell County was 99. So, and I always lived in Caswell County and I traveled there, and that was a little disheartening. So when I was able to come to Caswell. So working with the school system to try and get those people here and us going to the schools to increase reading, while also working with the partnership, they were doing blue book bags. But bringing people into the building for new books and they want the new books would help with the reading levels in the county. Does that answer it? No. Do you want to know specifically what we buy?
No, 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 no. Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at my benefit cost for each year.
How do we get more people to, okay?
Like I say, if you had twice as many books in your book budget, twice as many dollars in your book budget, what activity, what, how many more people would come to the library?
So, and I don't have the information exactly, but the amount of new books that come into the library is directly in relation to the amount of circulation you have. And I can get that from the state. Our circulation has dropped this year because of COVID and people were not coming in. But if you don't have the new books circulating, what people are wanting to read or what people will find interesting, then they're not going to come. So you do have to constantly have the new books coming in.
Yes, sir.
I might be able to help her answer. She may not understand all that you're asking. One of the things that happens is if a new book comes in and you and I both want to read it, you see, you don't got one copy, and I'm waitlisted. And if you don't bring it back on time, I'm still waitlisted. And that's the problem that I've seen here over the years. You got three copies of a book and you got 10 people wanting to read it, seven people are waitlisted, sometimes for months or so.
So what I think the point you're making is, it's not more different books. It's multiple copies of the same book would do a better job.
And it could be different books that, because I've come in and they've had to order a book from another library. And you still got to be waitlisted because the library is saying, until all our people read the book, I'm not going to send it to you, Ronald, so they all read.
There is, so the state library does let us borrow from, they have a contract with UPS that where we borrow books from other libraries, but Michael Mr. Hall said, the library that buys the book gets the book for six months. You cannot request it until they, because they spent the money on it. So we also have to do our part as far as providing books that, we can't be the only ones borrowing without offering to, having things that people can select from.
I'm just kind of curious why you didn't ask for more money?
I can't. I can reply.
We can talk about that later. We can talk about that later. Any other questions? Here's my question. Do you have any way that you can report to this board how many people actually visit the library and the times, the times that you have visits? Do you have anything, you don't have any way to do that?
We do. So we have a gate count. We have a gate counter at each door. And that is one of the requirements by the state that we turn in how many people visit. It's not times, but we can check it periodically throughout the day and then keep times.
I just thought that would be good for us to, not every month, but maybe a quarter or maybe not a quarter, but it would give us an idea of how many people are coming to the library.
Right. And I can't, I mean, we had, it counts people, the new system does not count people when they go out. It only count people when they come in. So at one point, we had 70,000 visits in a year. And I can tell you, most of that's going to be when we have children's programs.
Right.
But I can definitely.
But even that, just that, to know how many people are coming in in our library, I think would be good for us to know at some time. Just quarterly or, okay. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this. Good information. It is disheartening to be last in the state.
Commissioners, as you turn to your planning budget, you may see that the only real change in planning is updated salaries from last year. And there is a request for vehicle. And that vehicle is included, not in the planning budget, but in the debt service budget. Of course, another budget. Other than the vehicle, and I will tell you, the planning department has no vehicle. This is a new vehicle. Currently, if the planning department wants to travel out to do inspections or post signs or whatever they have to do, and there's a lot of that required by the planning department. They have to either borrow a vehicle or use Matthew's own personal vehicle. So this is a new vehicle. There's never been one there before. But we believe it is a needed piece of equipment. So that money is in debt service. Any questions?
And what's that amount?
The amount is, I think it's, I want to say 7,500, but I don't believe that's correct. Yeah. So debt service. 22,500. And that's for three, is that correct? 7,500.
You travel every month?
Increasingly, I happen to, I've got quite a few code violations going on right now. For example, we had some various appeals. Last year, they require state law requires them to post a sign on the property. It's also the planning department's responsibility to annually inspect all the outdoor shooting ranges and all the outdoor storage facilities throughout the county. And outdoor storage facilities are coming up mostly in June. And so it's just, it's one of those things, as Brian mentioned, it's kind of right on the line of always having to juggle with admirable health of building instructions to get vehicle. And building instructions is so busy these days.
And two, one of the challenges, and this is one of the reasons initially that I believed that we needed to go to more county vehicles and less people using their own vehicles, is because a lot of times when the planning department goes out to inspect, complain, the owners of the property are not very happy. So number one, it's good for the people when Matthew pulls up or the people that are there to see Caswell County, a Caswell County logo on a vehicle. It's also good that they don't identify Matthew's personal vehicle for obvious reasons, numerous reasons. But just for all-around safety and security, it's good to have those logos on the vehicle.
Can I imagine if it's possible, would you use some of these drugs, it is also the sheriff cars.
We can certainly look at that. We can certainly look at that. I think when the sheriff gave his presentation the other night, he indicated that only one or two of the vehicles were still worth having, the drug seizures. But I'll certainly check with the sheriff and see if that's possible.
I'll take Ron's hand, get it right.
I don't think it's worth that.
Well, I hear your question. How many miles they put on the van? Do they use it? Is that used?
It's not mileage, it's frequency.
Well, what it boils down to is it used every day, every other day, twice a month? You know, if we get her a van, even if it's got the stickers that they put on it. I mean, is that possible? How much do they use a van? And is it available where the county planning department can use it as much if not more than they? I mean, do they go out in the van every day? Can you coordinate your stuff with, I'm sure you have to coordinate now with other departments to get vehicles that you need?
If I may, just to mention something too. One of the most appealing things about a truck is, a lot of times, especially if we're posting for a public hearing notice, I have to state eight-foot signs if you grab. See if the van has that capacity to carry an eight-foot steel sign in the back. Again, I'm flexible when I'm open with a truck with open bed. It's most ideal for transporting the sign.
I was just curious about the library van. Six foot van, I would think you can get whatever you need to. My absolute dog. Don't worry, David.
And while I agree, there's ways about going, going about doing those things. Trying to juggle vehicles between two departments that are located a quarter mile away and arrange schedules. It's not always the most efficient way of doing something because what you may recoup in vehicle expense, you're going to lose in time. And that's not always the most appropriate way of.
Wish you got the most of the time and money.
But our time is.
I mean, we're getting, we're beginning to get a lot of vehicles.
We're beginning to do a lot of things. We have, we're building a high school where every other week, we're contemplating zoning. We're going through numerous changes within the county. We've implemented a HIDO, which is going to cause more complaints and more trips for the planning department. We're constantly seeing additional complaints made. I mean, we're on the verge of needing an officer to go out and respond to the number of complaints we're seeing. So, you know, if we can pay $7,500 a year for a vehicle and not have to hire an additional person at $35,000, $40,000 plus benefits plus a vehicle, I think we've come out ahead financially, from a financial perspective and a time perspective.
When, when the director uses his own vehicle, what is the cost of that amortized over a year compared to the lease cost? See what I'm saying?
I do, and I can't tell you that. I can tell you, when I first came to the county and I looked at the amount and saw the amount that we were paying in employee mileage at 52, 53 cent, and I thought it, now it's 58 cents.
57.
Okay. So now it's higher than it was when I made that comparison back then. It was much cheaper to purchase a vehicle rather than have county employees drive their own vehicles. But that, that wasn't using a truck. That was using a Ford Focus as a vehicle in question.
Your personal mileage is, it's the same as a truck.
Right.
Commissioner Hall, do you have something?
I think security protection of employees now is more important than a few cents. How would you ever go? It's important when we say employees are doing their job, that the county logo be on the ticket. We had an outdoor storage issue. It's been a few years ago. And we cited it, you refused to pay. We took it to court. We told the judge he won't go pay, and he didn't pay. Now, you go out there with your personal vehicle, and they'll tell you what this guy might do. I'm just telling you, in my opinion, you're losing weight now. So I think we need to always keep in mind the security of county staff, county employees, first and foremost. As far as sharing, we can do that. I don't think the library is a good place to share. You know, maybe we could share with county manager, assistant manager, somebody, you know, who's closer by, whose schedules can be manipulated somewhat. If the county manager has to go to a meeting, probably pretty secure at its own cost. But when you start riding around the county, I'm telling you, I wouldn't do it, and I wouldn't suggest we do it. Your personal problem.
I agree with Commissioner Hall. If the planning director's following up on a complaint or something like that, pulls up his own personal car, who's to think that that person, who's that strange car pulling in my driveway? How many times, how many shotgun shells do I need to put in this shotgun to make sure I'm protected from this stranger pulling in my driveway? It makes a lot of sense. A magnetic sign would help, but I really think the, I, I agree with Commissioner Hall, but it's important to have the, the identity to determine who's coming.
And one final comment, I mentioned this earlier as a question to the planner. In my neighborhood, and I live out in the country, we've got a family dollar, a Dollar Tree, and was that another one?
Dollar General.
Dollar General, all write that together. How does that impact what, or did it impact what your office has to do?
No, that's just a simple plan review on the front end. Those properties were in a watershed, they comply with all the watershed regulations. The, the, really the vehicle comes into question again with code violations, with public hearing notices, with outdoor storage permits, things of that nature. Another factor I wanted to mention with personal vehicle, a lot of times there, there's, it's fine to take a personal vehicle and there's not much risk. But a lot of times, if, if property is way down at the end of gravel road with a bunch of potholes in it, my personal vehicle simply can't get down there, you know, safely. And so a truck, it's a little bit higher with maybe even four-wheel drive capabilities is better. But no, those stores, normal course of business, really the, the vehicle comes into play with code violations and the other public hearing type issues.
I would just want to add it back. I was, I had moved away from the vehicle. Just add it back to your duty responsibility.
No, they're keeping our building inspections department very busy.
I will. Were you thinking four-wheel drive?
I don't know that it needs to be four-wheel drive.
I'm thinking that so large it's viable to two-wheel drive, not leaning up bad, you can buy it.
What we've got to remember when we're looking at leasing any vehicle or purchasing any vehicle is not so much the use of it initially, but also the resale value and what kind of equity we see in vehicles when we go to turn them in and sell them. As you currently know, we lease, how many trucks do we lease? There's five or six, a handful of trucks that you leased last year for county employees. We currently have in excess of forty thousand dollars of equity in those trucks that will help us move forward if we turn those in in new lease payments. So when we look at leasing vehicles, we need to be very in touch with what our fleet management program says and tells us we'll get the best return from when we, when we turn those vehicles in. It may be better to buy a two-wheel drive vehicle. It may be better to go ahead and pay the additional hundred dollars a month for twelve months on a four-wheel drive vehicle so we can see the equity build and the return on our investment after the initial twelve months or twenty-four months period.
And I think it's probably a discussion we'll have a little bit more when we get to actual looking at the debt service on a vehicle lease numbers. But I, I agree, I, I think, I think we need to keep in mind about safety of our employees when they do have to travel and, you know, if we could work it out where, you know, wherever we could share a vehicle, that's great. But that just may not be feasible in certain situations, so. Any other questions on that particular comment? I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I know, I think in eighteen nineteen, we either purchased or talked about purchasing the drone and camera?
Yeah.
We did that?
Well, the, uh, Barry did that through EMS.
Okay.
We had talked, we had pulled my budget up and we had talked about going at it. Two or three different departments sharing that cost and purchasing one, and so I produced minus result.
So my question is, have, have you had an opportunity where you've used it yet?
We used it together once with the Page Town Road incident and the complaints of last year that we, we done there. We did a site visit together and Barry operated the drone, but I was there with him. I mean, it's an incredible piece of machinery.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Let's have transportation. Commissioners, as you're aware, CATS program is also enterprise fund necessarily, a general fund expense.
Any significant things you want to share with us from your budget?
I do have some, just some information from the budget standpoint, just some things that we've done throughout this fiscal year. I want to share with the board, if that's okay.
Yes.
I would like to start off by recognizing the CATS staff for being so resilient and dedicated during the pandemic. Especially like our drivers, they did have to go out and there were ambulances and, you know, they were definitely exposed to COVID, you know, nineteen. We put in every precaution that we could to help protect them. CATS never did stop providing services during the pandemic. We provided transportation to medical appointments, to dialysis. We also took individuals to the parish that needed to get meals picked up. We also took people to COVID, to get shots for their COVID shots. And that was free of charge to citizens and still continuing to be free of charge. So, and we have advertised this, that if anyone needs a shot, that we are providing free transportation to get those shots. We were able to secure funding through the CARES Act to assist us being able to run our services and to keep us running since we didn't receive any ROP funds this year. And of course, ridership was down due to the pandemic. So thanks to these funds, we were able to cover the cost of our admin as well as our operations. So that was definitely a great opportunity for us to be able to go after these CARES Act funds. We applied for three different grants that they had opened. And so every time they had an opening for more funding, we jumped on it so that we would be able to get it. These funds, like I said, were able to help cover our admin and operations. And they also allowed us to be able to put up driver shields at the buses and to pay for our PPE cleaning supplies too. And we also were able to put up lift guard gates on all of our buses. And this was thanks not only to CARES Act funding, but to NCACC. NCACC pays forty-five hundred dollars each physical year. It's not only assistance by the gates, but it will help cover the maintenance that has to be performed or even transferring an existing gate from an existing vehicle that we're having that we're getting ready to replace and paying for it to be installed and put on the new bus as well. So we are really appreciate NCACC participating in this cost with us. So we were able to put the roll guard gates on all of our lift vans and it did not cost the county anything to be able to do that.
And I think it came through our risk pool.
Yes. And that, like I said, that participated in forty-five hundred. And what it didn't cover is we went ahead and did all of ours. We were, because we were able to offset the rest to the CARES Act funds. So all of our lift buses have the roll guards now only. We're very optimistic that we will receive ROP funding this year. All the talk seems to be very promising that we will be receiving that. We did apply for fifty-three-ten E and D, which is elderly and disabled funding again. We plan to replace two buses in our current fleet with the state and federal funding. They will cover ninety percent of this cost like they usually do. The Medicaid transition, which I know you all are aware of, it is definitely taking place July first. And we're doing everything on our end to try to be ready for this heat transition. We continue to take our precautions for COVID nineteen. We're not letting down our guard with that to keep staff and passengers safe. And I'm glad to report that all of our staff, except for one, has received both of their COVID vaccine, both of their COVID shots. So we're glad of that as well to help give them that added layer of protection. And most, a lot of our riders have even, we've transported them to, to get the shots. So that, that makes everybody feel a little more comfortable that everybody is getting vaccinated. It seems to be in our circle that we're transporting. The majority seem to have went ahead and got the shots. I'm glad to report that also we are updating some of our scheduling and billing software. That some of the changes are coming through simply because of the new Medicaid brokerage system. There's some things that are having to be done, like on our end. Through the industry provides our scheduling billing software for free to us. And there are plenty of added features on there to help, like when we do provide these trips and everything, to be able to upload them to the different portals that will be uploading the trips and the payments to now. And the good thing I can say about the transition in the first year, only about fifteen to twenty percent of Medicaid recipients will be transitioning to the brokers. The majority will continue for the first year to stay with DSS. So this does give everybody some time to kind of adjust to this transition and to see how things, you know, are going to work. So that's just kind of an update on what we have going on. And like I said, we do plan on asking for two buses to this fiscal year.
My question would be, what you've done this past year with the CARES Act funding? I assume providing the transportation to, to the Caswell Parish and for the COVID shots was simply because of COVID CARE Act funding?
Yes.
And I think county manager, we're going to get something like in this new American Act, we're going to get something like four million dollars over three years, is that?
Yes, it's four point four million dollars over a four-year period, three-year period.
Okay, so, so the question, will you continue to, to request funds to do some of this?
As long as the CARES, because I know the CARES Act that we applied for was separate from what the county applied for. So we have reached out, cost through NCDOT is how we were able to go through for ours. We asked for, and we have received like three hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred ten dollars. So, which a lot of that has definitely been used to cover operations and our admin and all the different things that we are putting, services we're providing now and measures that we've put in place. We're hoping that we, they seem to be promising that there is going to be more dollars to go after. And of course, if they're all, we're definitely applying for those.
Yes, so am I correct in reading this since we don't have our cash flow diagram yet? The eighty-one thousand, eighty-two thousand dollars is what the county?
That's, that's not our enterprise funds.
Okay, so the county really supplies zero dollars. That makes me feel better because I.
Yeah, that's not our appropriated fund.
I would just like to make a comment that Melissa does one heck of a job. She is like a drill sergeant. Meetings and I appreciate her organization of those. Very glad to be part of that.
Comments, questions? No? All right, thank you.
Need another comment?
The end of that. Commissioners, as you can see, there's about twenty-eight thousand dollar difference between twenty-three, six sixty-two. Three thousand dollar difference between last year's budget for section eight and this year's budget section eight.
A little bit of that is coming from salary benefits from April to October of last year. And we were down to two employees with missed turnus retirement. So I was covering the director's position as well as the magistrate assistant. So we're just going back up to that three full-time employees this year with the benefits. And then with that program as well, we're pretty much self-sufficient. So our whole funding pretty much will cover our expenditures.
I'll go ahead and ask my question. I see your objective is, is continue to work on community outreach in search of new landlords. And my question is, what is the process for that? So for instance, if I had a rental property or a property I wanted to get into your program, what would be the process?
The first step, we would do courtesy inspections is requested a lot, just so we could come out and do an inspection of the property to see if there are deficiencies, if you would be willing to do those deficiencies so that it meets our house quality standards for our tenants. But other than that, there's not a big process. We do ask that you go through a landlord briefing. A lot of times that would just entail receiving information about section eight and how it works. But other than the inspection, it's just a matter of a landlord accepting direct deposit payment on the first of each month and filling out the appropriate forms.
Okay, follow-up would be, are there inspections that continue?
Yeah, so we're mandated by HUD to do annual inspections. We also do random inspections through the year if needed. We do immediate repair inspections. So if a tenant or landlord calls and they're having issues, we would go out and do an inspection of whatever issue they're reporting. And we do re-inspections to make sure that the work is done and done properly.
Questions? Comments? Yes, sir.
We have limited housing in, in Kappa County. So what are your thoughts concerning expanding the program instead of just section eight housing, expanding it to all housing? Little them, our market-based housing. Well, I just stopped there.
So with section eight housing towards vouchers, we are obligated to use our half funding for just section eight assistance, which is income-based. Typically, a tenant will pay thirty to forty percent of their income towards their rent. Of course, we would love to expand. It, it would be a miracle for us to drastically increase our rental housing in Caswell County. Right now, we're seeing a very low rental stock. But with that being said, we don't have the population as our larger surrounding areas. And a lot of times that limits our grants that we could be approved for. I have put in many requests for veterans vouchers was probably the one we try for every year. Because we don't have a hospital or a VA nearby, we're normally shut down. However, if we could increase our lease up. However, if we could increase our list of improved that we need more assistance, then there may be possibility in the years to come that we could increase different types of vouchers.
Okay, now, past the vouchers, just straight tenant pay. Looking at the possibility of grants, state or federal, to, to just build some housing. Let's say market-based housing. And I guess this is what I was trying to get your thoughts on. I understand that's section eight.
Right, um, I mean, we could always try to give those grants. I, I don't really know how, how exactly that works. I know for many, we would probably have to match a certain percentage of what the grant is or, or put up a certain amount first. But, but we could check into it. But that's not going to be a hundred percent grant-funded from, from what I've seen on other grants.
Okay, I'm just thinking. We have a major problem recruiting, say, two kids in the school system. Because there's nowhere for anybody moving to the county to live.
Right.
If they can't find a house to rent, then they have to commute. You've got to commute an hour or so, then chances are you're going to work a year to leave. So I'm thinking more for the county itself, even if the county had to put up some money. And this is just my idea, I had discussed this with everybody. I'm just thinking that it would help if we had houses that at some point could focus on market-based housing. Low-income housing, not just low-income.
And Commissioners, projects like Commissioner Romo is talking about, a lot of times you see public-private partnerships come together to form these kinds of housing complexes or housing units for market rate housing. So if that's something more, wants us to look into a public-private partnership, more than that. Anything else? I've just got a couple more, just really more comments, I guess. I see that in your objectives, that you want to update, reconstruct policies and procedures for applicants, landlords, et cetera, tenants. Is that going to be mainly like software where?
Yeah.
Awesome, but and I guess the point I'm trying to get to is, in the end, is, is this something that would, that they could do online?
Yes, so we implemented this past year online applications for our applicants that we've seen a big success in. We purchased SecureSign as well, where our contracts could be signed via email with electronic signature. That really helped us out a lot during COVID-19. Having people come into our office was something we wanted to limit because we just don't have a lot of space within our office. So, so it really helped by purchasing those two softwares. So that, that definitely was, we were grateful to have those abilities.
Are you guys? Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Animal Control. Commissioners, as you look through your animal control department, I think you'll see there is a thousand dollar increase in vehicle services and repairs. Other than that, the only increases are in salaries, home jeopardy, retirement.
The last page of that. Sorry.
Other, so, do you have any questions?
So I see that you're requesting a truck.
Yeah, and the truck is, is in the debt service.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask, if that was included in that debt service lease program.
Can we go back and make sure, but I'm pretty sure.
I would assume that twenty-two, five is three vehicles instead of just two?
It is, it's three. So it's planning, EM, and then animal control.
I believe so.
And we need to increase that.
Any questions for animal control?
So, okay, I have one, County Manager, I went through all the revenue, but I don't remember right off now. Is this animal control department supplement in that by the town against a deal at Billings? I think that's something we should have a discussion about.
We, we've talked about that several times with the interloper agreements, but the board's never.
Right, I think we need to nail down this discussion. Those towns, by virtue of their charters, are sovereign. And so they are expected to take care of themselves. If they don't, they can contract with somebody to help out them. So we are at a point now, rather than talking about it, we need to make a decision as to what services, how many, how much services, how many services we're going to donate to, to the towns.
Before you leave, just tell us, how's our new animal welfare ordinance? Yeah, so I can for, for your department.
Yeah, sure. Leap you ahead of what we had in the past. It's been working pretty good, you know, part of it is just an educational thing, you go out and work and deal with the public. And you kind of have to brief them and, you know, for the most part, people understand. But I mean, it's, we haven't had any real issues with it. I mean, you know, there may be a bump in the road here or there, but, you know, so far, up to this point, it's, in my opinion, it's been working really well.
Anything else? Well, thank you.
Who we got to leave? Parks and Rec.
Tab eight.
Gosh, everybody says, oh, me.
So Commissioners, you see some salary adjustments like you've seen in, in all the others. You see some incremental increases in motor fuel and travel and training. Travel and training is interesting. They're actually receiving, Ricky, maybe you're better equipped to talk about this than I am, but certificates from Ohio State University?
Well, that's just, we actually did a thing called Groundskeeper University, which was free. The Beacon Athletics, where it teaches you how to work on fields. And then we also did some coach training through USA Baseball, which is also free. This through Ohio State, it's just going to be one person, it'll be me, that does this online training to get certified in sports field management, the actual dirt and grass stuff. And it's all online through Ohio State, which is a pretty big program. And it was in my budget last year, but I didn't quantify that it was online. And I'm under the process of, anybody thinks, oh my gosh, he wants to go to Columbus, Ohio, to go train, no, I'm good here.
So from the description, there's also five hundred dollars for vehicle services and repair, two hundred and fifty dollars advertising. A decrease in five hundred dollars in dues and subscriptions. The biggest, the biggest thing that we see in Parks and Rec budget is there was a request for a hundred and one thousand dollars of capital outlay. Manager's recommendation was forty thousand. And due to a subsequent discussion that Ricky and I had, I'm, I'm not even sure about the forty thousand dollars at this point. Because I'm not sure that it'll do any good, right? It's got to be eighty-something thousand, eighty-six.
Eighty-five, eight.
Eighty-five, eight. But.
Would you like me to explain that?
In a minute, in a minute. I, I just want to finish first.
I'm sorry.
I do believe that it's something that's really needed. Because if we're going to be playing sports on these fields, I think it's our responsibility to create a safe playing environment. I'm not sure we're there yet. So having said that, or I'm not sure we're there now, so having said that, please.
We're, we're right there on the edge. I mean, I, I can't give you a timeframe of when it will be below the minimum standard. The plan, I approached Tommy Lawrence, electric contractor out of Rockspur, who has serviced the lights for some time. And we came up with three different plans. Plan number one, I wouldn't have come to you guys and asked for it because y'all just looked, he's crazy, he's got to go. Plan number two was almost as bad. Plan number three, which ended up being eighty-five, eight, is to remove all of the lights on my small ball field. Take those lights and move them to the larger ball field and then install new lights on the smaller field. It will bring everything up to the minimum standards right then and give us some more years of life. On the other end of the spectrum, I got a quote on replacing all of the lights and the bowls. And the price tag was six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. I said, absolutely not, I will not go and ask these gentlemen for that. So. But I just want to throw it out there that, you know, they have six hundred and fifty-one versus eighty-five, eight. But that's, but that's where we are, that's the, that's, that's a fix.
So Commissioners, while we do see there is a need, we also have, after COVID, we have waning participation in all of our tennis courts currently. So I'm, I'm not sure if we're at a point to where we need to spend that kind of money in a current fiscal year. There may not be a lot of participation. Or do we view it as a field of dreams? If you build it, they will come. I think that's a board decision, whether you invest in the field and hope participation increases or whether you wait till we see an increase in participation before we start making this type of change.
Question?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about taking lights up at the small field and moving them to?
The next field, field number two.
Field number two, where there are not?
There are lights in it. They're going to, they're going to add the lights from field one to the existing lights on field two.
Is that replay, that's not replacing any poles?
No, no, no poles have been replaced.
The same?
Yes, sir.
What did we ever do about one of them, right?
It's already been repaired.
Been fixed.
We actually ended up repairing three of them, we repaired three of them.
Did we just replace them with wooden poles?
Yes, sir.
And if you went the other route, it would be with the?
With the metal poles? They were, that was nine thousand dollars per pole, just the pole.
And these three lights, the ones that you're talking about taking them, will last? Spending eighty-five, five, the reason I'm asking is, I know some of the poles are in bad shape, I've looked at.
Well, some of the ones that were, yes, we replaced those pretty hastily, quickly, right, my hastily. I don't see any, I haven't seen any that look in the back shade. But the, but taking the lights from field one and adding them to the lights on field two brings those lights up. And then they put the new ones, and there's only four poles on field one, so it'd be four banks of lights on field one. So I mean, I think it would, I can't give you a number of years. Yes, I, I can't because I don't know, because I don't know how long some of those lights have been up there.
Well, that was going to be my next question, how long have they been there? From a safety standpoint, when I saw those other poles, it makes me nervous.
We had one that looked like a question mark.
Yep.
And it's gone.
And the one with the hole in it?
And that's gone.
Okay, in the middle of it.
Right.
So I, I think there's some more information that, that we need to receive from the contractors or whomever before the board has all the information you need to make these kind of decisions. And that's something that we can definitely work out during our upcoming budget meetings. And I'll work with Ricky on getting that information. But just so that, that's one of the things that we're wrestling with right now, is replace now or replace later, so.
Are there any kind of grants or corporate sponsorships that could be matched or used for this?
There may be some Parks and Rec specific, but they're not going to total a lot of money. And most granting, most granting organizations, when they're going to grant you money, they'll grant you money to build something. But once you've built it, it's your responsibility to take care of it. If you didn't have enough money to take care of it, they wouldn't have granted you that, that money in the first place. They, it's not a continuity type of thing, so they, they don't look very favorably on that.
How about private donations, fundraisers, things like that?
Well, I, I would assume that the Parks and Recreation Group.
Recreation Development Foundation.
Yeah, I would imagine they would be interested in, in participating, but still yet to raise eighty-seven thousand dollars, it's a, it's a large leap. I, I don't know what they have now, but it's.
Yeah, I know they, I know they. I assume they have provided those, a lot of jerseys, I'd say, on the kids. Yeah, that's a lot of money for them to try to.
Yeah. The thing about the grants and stuff, a lot of it is maximum funds, so you've got to come up with money to start off with. And even if you get one, you've still got to accumulate that money somewhere. So you're looking at years of, of raising this money. If, if RDF were to do it, it would, it would take years.
So Commissioners, are there any other questions?
I, I would just say, please keep a check on the poles that we had, and if there's one, let's get it replaced because we don't want to take a chance. I know you won't, but. Just, I, I noticed also in your, in your description, or I think you wanted to, electronic payment of the card?
Yes, we, we would like to be able to do that. And no one cares anymore.
Right.
I mean, I do because I'm old and just, I don't like cards. But it would help being able to do, I guess you call it a point-of-sale thing.
We really need to look at doing that more holistically at county level, rather than from a departmental basis.
That's what I was going to bring out, is since we've already got a couple of requests today, I think we need to look at.
Yeah, and encompass, you know, rebid it out and let it encompass the departments that are already taking. It's just getting cumbersome to do it on a departmental level.
Any other questions?
Does, does the new finance software support any, is there a module, plugin?
Does, does the new finance software support any, is there a module, plug into that that helps them?
Not, not to receive credit cards straight back, but it will interface with credit card receipts.
I mean, we ought to use. That's gotta be a given.
True.
I think it makes a lot of sense, we'd have to do a better job. Nobody but people to have more room in their pockets for cash, to carry cash.
Any other questions for? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, that's all we had scheduled for today. We did need to set our next meetings. I will say this to you, that Commissioner Carter, he has his treatment on Tuesdays and Fridays. So he can't be here today, he will not be able to be here Friday if we have it in the morning on Fridays, because it's in the morning. So I don't know if we want to look at another night this week to have a meeting. One thing I would suggest is, since we have our regular meeting on Monday morning, that maybe we continue with a budget meeting, have lunch, dessert, and have a budget meeting after that meeting. If that would suit everybody, that way we're already here in the end, so we can continue. But it's up to the board, you need to kind of let them know how you want to go with this.
Just to excuse me, that's pretty hard stuff.
So do we, do you feel like we need to go ahead and meet again this week and meet with our other department? Well, that is one. So we want to just wait and do that on Monday? Our next budget meeting will be after our regular meeting on Monday? I don't know, we would be meeting with other departments and have another.
But maybe because I are due, but we're going to hire major first.
Well.
Are we talking about a day, a whole day?
Well, I figured, I figured that meeting will last eleven, eleven-thirty normally. Eat lunch and then start our budget meeting.
After the session.
An afternoon session. Couple, like two hours, try to hold it to two hours.
Well, what would we do Thursday night?
Well, we just, and we don't have to do it if we're going to do it Monday. If we finish up meeting with departments that have larger requests. I would think so.
He's trying to get everybody here or someone that they're contacting.
Well, yeah, I'd rather do it, but it does, you know, that's.
Did you met with the majority of them today?
Yeah.
That'd be more.
I know roughly thirty, maybe? Yeah, maintenance, family services.
I would think it's less than five, because.
Registered deeds. Maintenance. Family services.
EMS will be a big one and maintenance will be a big one. And. But but we'll shoot, but we'll shoot to try to get that done.
There's not many.
So Monday. Let's, let's do, let's just right now, this plan on Monday, we'll have our regular meeting, we'll have lunch, and then we'll start budgeting and try to keep that budget meeting under two hours if we can. And then we'll schedule another meeting if needed. I will let you know, not that this doesn't matter, but I am going to be out of town on June thirteenth and twentieth, but.
What?
Yeah. I schedule a year in advance, I didn't know I was going to be chair. Any other, any other comments or questions or? Before we recess? Okay, we'll recess this meeting till Monday, June the seventh, is that June the seventh, sir? After our regular meeting. Thank you, gentlemen.